Yeah, I got one. I printed it already.
Did you print it?
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
This is the revised version distributed earlier. Thank you. A big change.
I think Carol has one.
Yeah, I have one.
Thank you.
Right.
It's like chocolate.
Good evening. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We've called order this meeting of the town council and our first item of business is announcements. I have none to make because any counselor have an announcement? Is there anything that anyone wishes to make sure is announced? All right then, moving on to the approval of minutes, we have two sets. One is July 5th, our interview, and on July 6th, our last meeting.
Motion to approve both. As written unless someone needs to change.
Second, motion is made and seconded is the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item of business is department head reports. We have reports from the clerk, the building official, the assessor, the fire chief, and the finance director.
Motion to approve, to approve, motion to place on file the department head reports. The option if someone wants to talk about any one of them.
Second, motions made and seconded is their discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is old business. The first is a report from the town administrator to provide us the status on an offer of employment for the director of public works. Mr. Administrator.
Mr. President, it's before you, a negotiated contract with the prospective candidate. And I disseminate in your guidelines and your instructions.
Any questions or comments?
I just had one comment. Of course, we all met on this. We gave you some guidelines. You stayed pretty much within the guidelines, but it's a very good contract as far as I'm concerned for George. So, and that's all I want to say about it. I hope he is the man we're looking for. It certainly seemed like he was the man we're looking for. So, I guess it's, I'll make a motion that we ratify this.
I'll second it and just comment on G, the merit pay 5% increase. I think the goals, I don't know if the word goals is in there. Oh, yeah, it is. I think they're spot on. It's exactly what we talked about, and they all appear right there. So, it's nice to see we have a meeting and we hire someone. We talk about what's important that shows up in their contract, and it did in every one of them. So, congratulations on that.
Thank you. And I'll have an opportunity to meet with Josh tomorrow, obviously, if you ratify the contract. I have a time set for 2:00 tomorrow to meet with him precisely go over those goals.
Any further comment?
Just can you authorize him to sign on behalf of the town, please, in your motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify the contract and allow the town administrator to sign the contract.
I'll second that one, too.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Correction. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for your work on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item of business is to approve or to present to you the administrators and my review of the financials. I've given you a corrected copy. We, I overlooked a specific overage, which was charter review. Other than that, what you see is highlighted in yellow is the, those are the revisions. Basically, the first part consumes the majority of the contingency account. Then in the second block, there are two items that receive funding from special funds, the fire donation fund and the ARPA fund. And then in the third block, there are situations where a department head has the authority to recommend and we can approve moving from one of that department head's accounts, in the case of the building official, from the building official to the inspectors or from the public works director to the tree warden. So, those first three are movements or rather accounting for either overages by, by funding it from contingency, from special funds, or from other associated funds for that particular department, which the charter permits the department head to do. The fourth block is encumbering amounts. That's the, that's where we look at what's in the budget for fiscal '23, which is now over, and say, what of those funds did we not do and, and propose to encumber so as to be able to do in the upcoming fiscal year? And a common sort of thing, as a matter of fact, you'll see the most, the largest by far amount is nearly $300,000 of highway funds. And that's a combination of either the fact that we do the highway repair on the latter part of the summer rather than the earlier part, or in the case of this, there's a number of other sources such as snow removal. You remember snow when we used to have it. And, and that's, that's the kind of thing that, that we budget for, but then are carrying over so as not to cause us in the coming fiscal year to be in need of funds for, for a road repair that might be larger than we had budget, or had, so all of those funds would be used for that purpose. Finally, the last two are two transfers of funds unused in the legal area and in the capital area into the appropriate either legal reserve or the capital fund in order to be able to be used as they, as they are.
I was in town hall and went over this with Bob. He kind of explained everything the way he had it written down, and I thought he did a terrific job on it. So, I'll make a motion to approve it as it's presented.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the proposal on end of year financial actions. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is new business. I have in front of you a letter from the pension committee, which I chair, and the pension committee has been reviewing specifically the town's 457 plan, and their intention is to see if it might be an avenue through which we could provide an alternative pension. That is not before you tonight. You're not, you're not voting on that, but that's why the pension committee is looking at this. In their process, they looked at our Lincoln financial plan that we offer, and several of the employees of the town use that plan for retirement planning. That is, they take a portion of their salary and put it in there. We have discovered in our, we, the pension committee, have discovered in our efforts to understand what the pension plan, I'm sorry, the, the retirement plan that's offered by our 457, how might it be improved? And among the things that they immediately said Lincoln did was, you are under a very old process by which you spend, your employees spend, an inordinately large share of their contributions toward funding the activities of the plan. We have a much better version of that, one might say. Be nice if you told us that earlier, but nonetheless, they did. And they've said, you should convert your current plan, which is called a multi-fund 457, 1989. So, it precedes, well, it's not older than I am certainly, but it's, it's a long time ago, 1989 was. And you ought to move to an alliance 2023 plan, and you see the benefits of that. Your, what I'm seeking from you tonight is the authority for the town to change its method that they tell Lincoln to use for the handling of our funds. And when I say our funds, it's actually the funds of our employees. There is no town money in this. It is only, only the employees' money, but we are offering a pension, a retirement plan that is antiquated, and this would give us a, an opportunity to do differently.
What about the employees that are actually making this contribution? Are they on board for this change as well?
Yeah, well, I'll say that we have several of them on the pension committee that are, that are contributors, and they have said so. I can't, I don't believe there's anybody that, that I'm aware of that's argued that, no, no, we ought to stick with what we have.
I didn't know about it, but I would be in favor of a change if it's going to save money and be a better plan.
Yeah, the return is significantly better, and the charges are significantly smaller. It doesn't seem like it's a, it's a win-win as far as I can see.
I'll move, we move forward with the change based on the recommendation of the pension committee.
Second, motion's made and seconded to move forward with the conversion of our retirement plan, our 457 retirement plan to the alliance version. Is there any further discussion?
Bob, on Lincoln Financial, that's the company that has, holds both these, the multi-fund 457 and the alliance 2023?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all inner, within that?
Within their company. Now, let me say that one of the perceptions of the pension committee was, why are we dealing with Lincoln Financial? Why don't we go get Fidelity or somebody like that that's more accustomed? As we, as we reviewed that, we found out that, in fact, Lincoln as a, as a, a participant with UBS, our pension fund administrator. Now, again, I'm, I'm not trying to mix these two. They're not, we're not talking about mixing money, but UBS has Lincoln as a subsidiary for other types of things, and they said to us, absolutely, that's, that's who we would recommend that you use, and since you're already using it, why not use the better plan that they're offering? So, we had UBS kind of independently review this. Anyway.
What struck me was the investments where the multi-fund 457 had variable annuities, the alliance 2023 had mutual funds. I follow these things pretty closely. In my personal opinion, variable annuities aren't the place to have your money if you want any kind of growth in them. So, I'm on board with.
All right.
With this. I've said my piece.
Bart Marshall has joined us. He happens to be another participant in this and was a participant in this discussion. We're talking about the conversion of Lincoln Plan. He and I have had some discussions about this, and he's on board with the idea that we make this move. All right, hearing no other discussion, are you ready to vote? All in favor of approving this recommendation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a request from the recreation committee to have the council solicit requests for proposals for the repair and construction of the town tennis courts. Counselor McHugh, as the representative or liaison with the recreation committee, could you bring us up to speed?
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding the recreation committee would like to spend some money for tennis court engineering, courts and their location that they're at. I would suggest that we have a committee, whether it's ad hoc or subcommittee, whatever you want to call it. I don't know if we want to make agendas or not, but have two rec. members, two council members. I recommend the planning board chair and two tennis, pickleball leaders to interview the engineers that will answer the RFP. I think Tony would probably have to make for this. I was a chair of the committee for 12 years, the last two I haven't, and we went through this process, and the rec. committee interviewed all of the candidates. I think there were five engineers. And, you know, I just think it'd be better this time if we had more of a cross-member section of a, of a committee to do that. It's my suggestion. I think it's a good one.
Yes.
I remember the rec. committee, and we talked to Tony as well, and what Pat said is exactly what we'd like. And the agenda was submitted today with the formation of ad hoc committee, one of the items on the agenda.
For the, for the rec. committee's next meeting?
Yeah, for the RFP, for engineer study.
So, are there any questions? People, folks understand what we're about here. We're trying to put together a group of people, of interested people, as well as?
Five people plus Tony.
I think Levina Gaston, the one that?
I've got seven. I've got two rec. members, two council members. I suggested planning board chair and two of the, as Gary is talking about.
Planning board chair is on the rec. committee.
The planning board chair.
I'm not a chair, but I remember the planning board on the rec.
Yeah, I know that. I was, I was looking for the, the chair to be on it. I think you would add something to it. So, that would be seven. I would ask the solicitor, how can we get around all, to making an agenda? Is there anybody to do it? Having to make an agenda and submit to the secretary of state?
For this ad hoc committee?
Not a true committee.
Right.
It's, I've, I've been through this. This is not a true committee. It's going to be advisory anyway.
Yep.
So, you're okay.
Nice you say that they're going to be workshops. Is that right, Carol?
No, I had, that's, he's talking about the fact that they're an ad hoc committee, so it's not a standing committee. Let's put it that way.
Correct.
If it was named a subcommittee of the council or a subcommittee of the planning board, it'd be a different story.
If it's advisory only, it does not meet on a regular basis. It has one task to do. You're all set. You're not subject to the open meetings act. Under LAP versus CRMC. Sometimes CRMC.
What are you trying to get yourself in trouble over there?
All right. How do you, how would you like to proceed? Would you like Counselor McHugh to?
Be ahead of it. The action that someone, I would like to be on the ad hoc committee, obviously, since I'm the liaison. If anyone else would like to be on it, that'd be wonderful from the council. I, I envision that we're going to meet once to interview the engineers, maybe another time to decide if we want to invite them back or whittle it down, and maybe a third to make our recommendation to the council.
Do we have time for you to return to the next meeting and say, here are the seven?
I think we can name two tonight. I think the rec. committee on their agenda will name their two.
Committee is going to do a preliminary RFP proposal. That's the rec. committee who's going to review it, make changes or not, and then send that to the city council. That's the plan.
So, the RFP, are you talking about the, writing the RFP?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, what we did it years ago. Boy, I'm trying to remember when we, who did it. I think it was the town, Bob, and it, it was a few people, I think, that did it. Bob, I don't know if you recall, but we have a town manager now who's probably pretty good at, at an RFP, and I would, I would think. I would, I don't know if we needed, I, I wouldn't think we need committee. That's just my thought for an RFP. Just, but.
I'm happy to join the committee of no other counselors. Why not?
Put it that way. Wow. But thank you.
As a, as a tennis player.
Thank you.
Very interested.
Thank you.
And I would suggest you get Levina Gaston, because she's the one that went, she's the one that proposed getting the $250,000.
And I'm, I'm happy to make Mike.
Or informally rate towards she's going to be on the committee.
Okay. I'm happy to put Mike Steer's name on there without him being here. If we can put him in a vote, Carol?
May I suggest I would entertain a motion that says we are to appoint or, or to assemble an informal advisory group for the review of the tennis court engineering and construction RFP. And then we'll use that group and, and, and we could change members as needs might occur, that sort of thing, if we needed to. How does that sound?
Is that a motion, Bob?
Do you want to name the three people we talked about?
Can, if you like. No, I'm not ma, I'm, I'm seeking a motion that captures this. So, is the, the motion, I would entertain a motion that appoints counselors McHugh and Moore and the chair of the planning board plus four other members to be named to this informal, to this committee. Give me the right name.
Ad hoc advisory.
Ad hoc advisory committee. Thank you. For the purpose of reviewing.
Reviewing the RFP and interviewing the candidates, the engineer candidates to recommend one to the council.
Carol, you got all up?
Yep.
I'll move it.
So, the ad hoc advisory committee will have two, have two charges. One, to help with the RFP, and two, to interview and recommend the finalists to the, to the council.
That then is the motion that Counselor Galumbeski has made. Counselor Mataronis says seconded. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks. That's, that should move us along well. Next is an announcement from the police chief of the promotion of Sergeant Ryan LeClaire to the rank of detective sergeant effective Friday, July 14. Is there a motion?
Kudos to Detective Sergeant LeClaire. Just, I just said kudos to Detective Sergeant.
Might that be the motion that the council offers its congratulations to Detective Sergeant LeClaire on his?
That's what he said.
Right.
Is there a second? Very good. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. Electronic communication received from Carter Wilkie. Announcing a new public advocacy campaign initiated by the next generation farmers across Little Compton, Tiverton, Westport, and Dartmouth under the banner Keep the Farm in Farm Coast. Communication includes a suggested farm-friendly checklist for municipalities to review. I'm going to suggest that if you haven't done so, take a look at the website he recommends. It's, it's very interesting. I think there could be great benefit gained from the communities talking to each other on initiatives with improving farmers' ability to have and, and live on and use a farm. And I would be in favor of our participating with the other three communities in, in discussions and conversations about what we're each doing. But I don't need anything to happen with this other than to acknowledge we've received it and to place it on file for the moment.
Just a side note.
Yep.
Has the planning board got a copy of this?
The planning board.
I think it was only sent to the town council.
I, I, excuse me. I'm on the planning board, and I did receive a copy.
You did, you did get it.
And I'll, I'll make a suggestion that the council could recommend that in our discussions with the comprehensive plan that it should be strong consideration of this in our comprehensive plan.
Our periodic comprehensive plan review and up, and update.
Yes.
That we would incorporate, or look to incorporate the principles. Thank you.
Is the review supposed to be, start this year?
Please.
The comp. plan review, does that begin this year or is it next year?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is, it is under review.
I think it's due next year or some, some schedule like that. But that's, that's an excellent suggestion that we incorporate some of the principles that they've advanced here.
So, now, how do we make a motion to the?
I would entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of this, of this document and to direct that the planning board pursue incorporating the principles of this doc, of this initiative in their planning, in their comprehensive plan review. Discussion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And very appropriately, our next item is an electronic communication from Kate Almy, who's with us tonight, expressing displeasure with crop cannons and hours of operation. Speaking of farming, this is an area in which the farm and the community interface, and Almy has made the point that it is her perception that, first of all, she asked that a council person come and clear the cannons. Counselors Mataronis and myself, and I don't, and I think Counselor McHugh, from our discussions with Almy, have all three heard the, what she's speaking of. And I would ask if you have something that you'd like to add to the, to what you've written, or would you like us to reiterate?
Well, other than what we discussed today on the time of operation, questions about the DEM, the other farmers not using them, and then the other options that farmers have the, for instance, the other resources that the DEM has looked into using in the past, like the grant that they got for the laser machines, and just what's the next step?
Right.
Because they're not, they're just not, as far as I'm concerned, acceptable.
As your?
And, and today was a light day. I think, I think it was a really light day.
Okay.
They were, is there a trans, I think what was going on was they were definitely being moved.
Right.
Because towards the end, mid-afternoon, end of the day, they were on the other side. But for the past seven days, almost, there were two going off at every three minutes. And when you were there, it was right in your face typically what is, what exists that every three minutes for shots, right at the, right at that brush line.
So, I can get by.
I just, just to be, to be clear here, I have.
Send all the immediate. It's just that there's no accountability. There's no guidelines, call the DEM. It's just, it just, they just go off. They're just used, and there's no proof that they're really successful. They're highly recommended to be used with other, with other resources, and they're unbearable.
Right. With no denigration of your, of how you are responding to this, let me say that I've, I've brought this to the solicitor and asked to be clear what our authority is, and I'd like him to speak to that because, as you have brought up, the, the farmers have, I'll say, protection from someone simply saying, I don't like the way farms are operated. And that's both in our town ordinances and it's also in state law. So, I want to be sure that we, we understand the context. And I'm sorry for interrupting you, Counselor, but I, I just want to make sure that we have the solicitor able to, to comment.
Okay, there's two ordinance provisions in two state statutes that are relevant to complaint that you filed. One of the ordinances in one of the state statutes goes to the process for what, if anything, the council can do from here. The first ordinance is section 3-1.2, loudness of sound-producing equipment. And it appears to me that during the day, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, the maximum amount of a sound to be generated would be 55 decibels. After 9:00 PM in between 7:00 AM, that goes down to 50 decibels. So, you have to pair that with section 2-23-5 of the general laws. That's the right to farm. And one of the protections for a farmer under subsection A-2 is noise from livestock or farm equipment used in normal, generally accepted farming procedures. So, then the question would be whether or not these crop cannons are normal and generally accepted. That I, I don't know today. The other provisions go to the process from here. Both the state statutes, section 2-23.1-1, and from your ordinances, an entire chapter, section, chapter 20, starting with section 20-2. Anytime that the town would take action that would affect a farmer, there's a notification process that goes through the town clerk. The notification would be how the farmer's operations would be affected by the town action. The farmer on receipt has 10 days to respond and request in writing for a work session for the farmer to explain why the process is being done and why it's necessary for the farming operation. So, if the council were to take action on it, couldn't do it tonight. If the council were to take action on this complaint, the first step would be for the town clerk to notify the farmer that an action may be taken that would affect the farmer's operation. that an action may be taken that would affect the farmer's operations. The farmer then has an opportunity to respond. And if the farmer does, the town is required by state law and ordinance to afford the farmer a work session and give him an opportunity to explain what's going on before any action can be taken. That's the process.
So I think.
Let me just, I interrupted Counselor McHugh. He wanted to come.
Go ahead.
Yep. If I didn't know all that law, thank you. So I went to Kate's house and I listened for an hour. And it's really unacceptable what's going on down there with these cannons. I don't know the history of it. I don't know, you know, what's going on. Obviously, anybody that watches the council knows that I don't get my hands dirty or dig things or catch fish or anything like that. But it's obvious that the noise is unacceptable. If anyone lived there, you'd be going nuts. But the only thing that I wanted to know is where the cannons were. And I took an overhead and I asked Kate to tell me where they were. And she put a couple of X's where they were. And those X's that you put aren't, are on feral bank farms. And they don't grow corn. They just grow potatoes. So I don't think they're there.
No, that's to the north side. Yeah, no, they're leased from him. He'll grow potatoes there, but there is corn there now.
So I don't see corn on the overhead that I took. And the only reason I say that is maybe they're, I mean, the corn is here. You can see clearly where the corn is on the south side.
Well.
I wonder if.
When you come down the lane, you could just here and there see tops of the corn, like the silks, you could see it every inch. And that's kind of my other, sometimes I allude to that as well. There's no accountability. Is there corn over there?
Well, this overhead shows there's no corn over there. So I think we need to find out where they are. And, you know, try to put them somewhere where it's mitigated, the sound is mitigated. You know, and you would think that, you know, it would be to the south. I mean, here's your house here. And here is where you could farm. And they farm them, you can see here, there's like an L where the corn is. And you're telling me that those cannons aren't coming from here? And I didn't think they were, but I don't know.
South of me, no.
Right, and that's where the corn is?
That's cow corn. That's a different farmer.
Right, so you're talking feral bank farms?
So I, I left Bob and Kate to try to find out where the corn was because the crop cannon seems to be coming from the north to me. So the next laneway was 80A and 80B. So I went down there and there was all kinds of signs saying, no trespassing, keep out and everything. So I went halfway down the lane. There's your house, then there's a tree line, then there's corn, you know, a good portion of corn, and then maybe potatoes on the other side or else it's being laid farrow. There was some kind of growth there. I mean, I'm not a farmer, so I can't, I don't know what kind it was. But I did hear the crop cannons from there. It seemed like they were louder over on the north side. I think they were pointed to the north. I can't say for sure because there is that tree line between your house and the corn that may deaden the sound. But it was definitely much louder on the north side than on the south side where your house is. Now, I think what we need to do is find out if in fact whose corn that is on the north side of your house, because that's where the crop cannons are. And then you could hear where the split is in the road just to the southwest, where the other, there's corn across the road. There's crop cannons in there, but they're much less noisy. They don't make as much percussion as the one near your house.
Those, that started as of today.
Right, okay. But you could hear those, but they were, I wouldn't say they were negligible.
Further west.
Yeah, it is, right, correct. But I think before we can issue anything out, I think we need to find out whose corn patch that is, whether it's feral banks or whether it's the fruit stands.
Well, I just, I mean, I know only from seeing the activity of tractors coming and going.
Yeah.
And that starts in March, April.
Yeah.
You know, when they start tilling and liming and.
If it's north, that's feral bank, right here.
Right, if it owns it.
Period.
Yep.
Well, so what is our responsibility to the person farming it or the owner of the property to notify them?
Always the owner.
Yeah. So we know who, we can find that out easily.
If the cannons are there. I don't know if they're echoing from the Watson reservoir. I don't know. But it certainly seems they were over that wall, right there. That's feral bank. And it's potatoes, I thought, but maybe there's corn.
So where Kate has that X on here, where it says State of Rhode Island Restricted, that's where that corn is. It doesn't look like it on this map, but I went there and there was corn stalks there.
Yeah, you saw them?
Yeah. So if you go up there, it says 80B. I only went in maybe 200 feet and got a clear path looking over. And I got out of the truck, I could see the corn. And that's where those crop cannons were coming from, right to the northwest of her house, right where she has those X's. It doesn't look like, and there's the tree line that I saw.
Yep.
So it doesn't look like from here that you can see those crops. But half of this was corn, the other half was, I don't know what they were. There was only short plants, maybe a foot tall. So that's.
And that could be like next month's corn, if it looked like corn.
No, it didn't look like corn.
Because they stagger.
No, didn't, no, it didn't look like corn to me. But, so we had, whoever's farming that State of Rhode Island Restricted area, we got to find out who has that corn.
What does it say, State of Rhode Island Restricted?
This is where I'm looking at. This is.
Okay, I see it.
This is Kate's house. And this is where the crop cannons were. Bob, you were with me up there. This is Kate's house. This is where we heard the crop cannons coming from. So she has it marked pretty, pretty well, so I'll.
So would our, our step would be to invite the owner of that property to come and discuss with us?
The town clerk would notify the property owner that a complaint has been lodged as to the farm operations and that the farmer would have 10 days on receipt of the notice to contact the town and request a work session. That's the process.
But I think the problem is if they're saying that Feral Bank owns that, I don't know whether he's planting corn. He may be, I'm not sure. But he may be leasing that land to somebody else to grow corn. So we have to ask him, is he farming it? Or is he leasing it to somebody else to farm?
But I think it's certainly right because the thought that the owner be approached with this notification as then, as like, I don't know, analogy being like a complaint to a landlord.
Okay.
That's it. And they're, well, it's not my problem. And he goes, knocks on, you know, unit 10A and says, here's an issue. So, but at least the owner is aware of it.
Yeah. Well, then I guess that's the process to take.
And almost certainly what will happen is the property owner gets the notice and they notify that the tenant farmer, that, you know, they should go in and probably you'll see both of them when they come.
Can I ask a question? You're referring to it as state-regulated land?
I need that one back, Bob.
I got more right here.
So what I'm looking at is to the north of your house, it's to the northwest. I guess it must be.
Is that like the entrust land, like?
I don't know, it says the State of Rhode Island Restricted to something and then it's cut off, is that?
Let me suggest that we not try to figure it out here, but rather direct that clerk to take the action that's called for and as described by the solicitor. And that way we can move to the next step. Is that seen?
I'll work with Carol on the thing.
So I would entertain a motion to ask the clerk and the solicitor to produce the necessary document to inform the appropriate owner of our desire to have a session, a work session with them.
So moved.
The motion is made by Counselor Moore and seconded by Counselor Mataronis. The discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I'm going to recuse myself.
There are four votes in favor. Counselor Golembeski recuses.
I do work for the leasier and the landowner. So it directly affects me, my income, so I got to stay with her.
Thank you. And you can be assured that this is the process that will unfold. Meanwhile, as you're aware, there are other people working this issue.
Thank you.
The next item of business is a letter from the police chief announcing that probationary patrolman Stuart Bremen has successfully completed probation, has been promoted to the rank of junior patrolman.
I'd like to make a motion that we congratulate Patrolman Stuart Bremen on being a good patrol person and welcome the job he's doing to the Little Compton community.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Offer congratulations. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask the police chief just a quick question regarding, how busy is it this summer? Busy than last summer, less this summer? How's it going out there?
We're about the same as last year. There's been different things happening, but it's steady. You know, it's obvious it's summer with the amount of traffic we have and people coming in the front door for various things. But I wouldn't call it any busier than last year. Just different.
All right. The next item of business is communications. It's an email received from Mimi Woodcock Carlson requesting that no one be allowed to use her moring, 49.
I talked to Hobbit Master on this. She seemed to have some problems last year. It was, she said some boat went on it and twisted the chain up. She had to replace the chain. I'm not sure how that could have happened. But that was last year. I talked to Mike Master. I told him not to put anybody on her moring. And I also talked to the manager. Andrew Halfnaffren told him not to allow anybody from the yacht club to use their moring. I wasn't using my moring this year. I replaced the chains and all that stuff, keep mine up to date. But when I put it in, all I do is put the moring ball on it. And I give the Hobbit Master the authority to utilize it, but he'll have to put his own head fast on it. And when he does that, then he knows what boat is going to go on it. So I, all I can tell Mimi is if you don't put a head fast on it, nobody's going to use it. Because if they see a ball there, they're not going to use that ball because it doesn't have a head fast on it. So people have been made aware of it. Except right now, there's no boat on it. I don't believe there is a head fast on it. So I'd like to place this letter on file.
I'll second it. Don't understand any of it, but.
The motion is made and seconded to accept and place the letter on file.
Get it out of the way.
Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A request from the United Congregational Church to use town landing on August 27th for their annual.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd entertain a motion to move the payment of bills ahead of the executive session so as to complete this during open session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'd entertain a motion to pay the bills as prescribed.
Motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I would poll the counselors for their willingness to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation. And upon successful passing of that motion, I would ask that the meeting be, the open meeting be secured and the public be, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Second. Discussion on that. Are there, is anyone, I see four, I see five hands as indicating a willingness to enter into executive session. Bill, make change.
I'm sorry, has to be roll call.
All right. May I have a roll call vote starting at the port side of the table? The left-hand side of the table.
Aye.
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 Hold on a minute. Roll call means I call your name and then you respond, okay?
Like Portsmouth and Middletown do.
Officer McHugh?
Aye.
Officer Arati Moore?
Aye.
Officer, sorry, I'm saying Officer.
Counselor.
Mataronis.
Aye.
Counselor Golembeski. Counselor Mushon.
Aye.
Satisfactory roll call.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the open meeting is completed and we are moving into executive session. Thank you very much for your participation.
How you doing?
How you doing? I sent two scopes to you, you know, two scopes of work.
Okay.
For all.
So if you can call me.
You'll be able to pull it up and see, you know.
It's on the agenda one day, so we'll get that squared.
Moving, moving.
Too fast.
You got it.
Thanks, Tony.
Yes, take care now, Michelle. See you soon.